The call to order, the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for June, July 10th, 2024. All pieces. I had a bit of a trip over here. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning Board of Appeals, you are hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, July 10th, 2024, at 7:00 as indicated. First, we'll do a call to order, introduction of board members. Manny?
Manny Olives, President.
Mark Hanson, Plur, President.
Paul Pard.
Larry Hurwitz, President.
Aaron Webb, President.
And I'm Herb Bowdenseek, Acting Chair tonight. This meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their present known. Anyone? First order of business, approval of minutes first, May 8th, 2024. I wasn't present at that meeting. Does any, has anybody had occasion to review those?
I have reviewed and make a motion to accept the minutes for May 21st, excuse me, 2024.
Your second, Paul.
Okay, passed. Second, I'll take a vote, I guess, yes. Manny?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And I'm in favor. I'm used to the Zoom meetings. I'm gonna change that now. Next is May 22nd, 2024. Has everyone reviewed those? Would anybody move to approve them?
Yeah, Paul, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 22nd, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They are approved. First order of business is old business, appeal number 2024-016. Jay and Betty James, Betsy rather, sorry, have applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-91H3, nonconforming lot. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family dwelling, raise the foundation elevation, and construct a new single-family dwelling. The new dwelling will be detached from the garage, leaving the existing nonconforming garage in place. No construction will occur within the setbacks. The subject property is located at 642 South Main Street, Centerville, Mass. It's shown on Assessor's Map 186 as parcel 041. It is located in the Residence D1, RD1 zoning district, and it's been continued from May 22nd. It would appear that no members were assigned on that date, so I will assign all members present, I guess, so.
That's six.
Oh, only five? Okay, everybody except Manny, because you're sitting on the end.
Works every time.
Fair is fair. Okay. Do we have anyone representing? Yes. Whichever you prefer, but that's probably better. And you need to turn the mic on to be able to speak.
Just hit the button on the mic.
Oh, there's a button right on.
It should already be on.
Oh.
It's already on. I had a green light, so I should be on.
Ah, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Rob Warren. I'm a co-owner of Sandola Customs. We've been hired by the homeowners to initially remodel the home and put a second floor on it. Also lift up the house during the demolition and remodeling of the home. We found that there was extensive insect damage and water damage and rot to the frame, which made it basically impossible to save the house. So we immediately notified the building department, who told us that we would, you know, instead of remodeling at great expense of the homeowner, we're proposing just basically new construction, but the same exact plan of the permit that was already approved back in 2022. Looking for no other changes, just trying to go from a remodel to a new construction.
Okay, and we're having some kind of a technical problem, so where?
Laser fiche is back up.
Laser fiche is back up.
Yeah.
Okay. For me, can I take a little brief adjournment to get my laptop back up? I got it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in charge of the screen.
bit more? Is the garage not being rebuilt, or is it just staying in place?
Garage is staying in place. And there was a portico, a breezeway that connected to that's being removed. Sort of be a standalone garage now. And then we just proposed to change it from a remodel to a new construction. Same exact plan, same exact everything.
The side yard setback in that, where I'm looking, sorry, it's a corner. Is that a rear? 14 and a half feet?
I, I don't have that plan in front of me. I'm an 11th hour stand-in. My partner, Steve, who's supposed to be here, was stuck on the Southeast Expressway.
That's okay. Maybe you can just orient me on the picture up here.
That's tough to believe.
On the, on the, what we call the northwest side. It says 14 and a half feet. Is that the backyard, or is the backyard? Like, is the house, the house is facing South Main Street, correct?
Yeah, so South Main is closest to you in that picture. And that would be the backyard. Or is it the?
Is it 10 feet? Is it 10 feet backyard there, or is it 15?
I don't know.
Maybe 10, but they maintaining it the same.
We have someone suggesting an answer in the audience.
My name is Joe Servant. I live next door to this property. You guys are doing a great job. We love living in this town.
We do, too.
We do. You guys have, you guys have helped me before with some permits and whatnot. Okay, you as a builder, wonderful, wonderful property in this town. I've seen its buildings. They're, they're really great. And pray to God we're gonna build a new house there. It'll be great. We've been looking at some bad stuff for five years. This will be wonderful. They're, they're, they're looking for, you know, a special permit to, to build something in a non-performing, or non-performing lot, which is okay. But they're tearing down the building, but they're leaving a non-performing, non-qualifying garage three feet from my house, from my lot, from my, and it's also, like, terrible. It should be demolished. I don't know, we have pictures of it? We have, it's, it should be demolished worse than the house. Anyone can see it. We've asked that. But so, they're, they're asking us as a town to give us, them permission to tear it down, but they're saying, oh, the garage that's detached from that now, they're saying, oh no, that's grandfathered. Let's keep it. I don't get that.
Well, it is pre-existing, and it's not within the purview of this special permit at all.
Okay, so should we get a special permit, or should we appeal that they have to tear it down?
I don't believe there's anything in the law that would even require that.
No.
But.
Can anyone on, on this committee come look at it?
Is this public comment? Was it?
Yeah, this is falling into the public comment.
I was just asking a question about setback, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I thought you were helping him to answer the question.
Oh, no, I'm glad to help him. He'll.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll have you back up in a couple of minutes, perhaps.
I'm just trying to determine, is where the garage is the side of the yard or the back of the yard? I, I need to, from the gentleman before you.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm, I'm a stand-in here. This is the first time I've seen the plan. It's, I'm just looking at the plan now.
Just a minute.
So I, I believe the garage is in the, in the backyard, correct?
It's on the side of the house.
On the side of the house?
3.5.
Is the deck staying or going? Is it being rebuilt?
Everything's being rebuilt exactly the way it is.
Okay.
There's no request for any increase in size, nothing.
I'm only asking because I think when it, when a new foundation is poured, I don't know if that triggers setbacks, even though it's nonconforming. I understand that.
We're not pouring a new foundation.
Oh, you're not?
We're just adding the height to the foundation, that's it.
My misunderstanding.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I would like to know what the current lot size is. I believe that's two-acre zoning there, and I think that's, it should probably be pointed out as the reason we're here.
Yeah, well, as far as lot coverage falls within the requirements, it's 19, it's taken up 19.5.
I'm just asking what the size of the lot is. I think maybe I have it here. Yeah, it's just under 10,000 square feet, and minimum lot size is an acre. I found it. So that's why we're here, just to clarify. Has nothing to do with garage setbacks, and the setback requirement's gonna be satisfied by the new construction or not built within setback. So this is basically a tear-down rebuild on a nonconforming lot.
Correct.
Which, I guess I'll open public comment, and then we can talk about it, but just to, just to clarify, that's.
I mean, in the, in the old town's report, it says it falls within the spirit of.
Right, that, too.
And, and, you know, can the homeowner still do it as a remodel project? You know, taking a wall down, rebuilding and taking a wall down, rebuilding?
We can talk about that, but I'm gonna open it to public comment.
Chairman, I have just a quick question, just for clarification real quick. So, again, you were submitted a building permit with plans submitted to remodel.
Correct.
Once you discovered during the remodel phase it made no sense to remodel, tear down, use the same plans that were already permitted, and rebuild.
And rebuild.
Extend the foundation.
Yep.
Pre-existing foundation, not pouring a new one.
Correct.
On a nonconformal, I mean, it's, it's, okay, that's all. I just wanted clarification of what, what, really.
It's a different, same exact result, different method of getting there.
Yep. Thanks.
So I'm gonna open public comment. I believe we have a gentleman who'd like to comment. Do you want to come back up? Just so we can do it according to procedure and have it on the record properly.
Joe Servant again. Let me say it very clear.
Oh, just introduce yourself again, please.
Okay, Joe Servant, next-door neighbor to this property.
Address, please, sir.
656 South Main. Let me say it from the top again. Love you guys. Love this town. Love this builder. The mass next door needs to be cleaned up. I'm not worried if they build one-story, two-story, if it's, he's building it, it's gonna be beautiful. I need that garage torn down. I wouldn't be here. These people that are gonna live next door, they're nice people. They're spiritually focused and going in the right direction. What more can I ask for? There's nothing to be said other than, you gotta look at this thing. It belongs in a dump. The house belongs in a dump, but they're gonna tear it down. This has been going on for five years. It's not myself. There's three other houses involved in this. Three other houses are beautiful, huge houses that's gotta drive by this every single day. Those three other people are asking me to bring this forward. Here I am, bringing it forward. The three other houses are on huge lots, they're beautiful homes, and they have families, and they have children, they have guests, looking at this house for five years. We're all taxpayers. You wanna look at our bills for taxes? They're huge. They're paying, look it up, $6,000 worth of taxes. Do you wanna look at my tax bill? Do you wanna look at the tax bill for the three other houses? Significantly more than what this property is paying.
Okay, that's, that's really immaterial.
It's not immaterial. It's very important. We're taxpayers.
It's not germane to what's in front of us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And tearing down a garage is also not within our authority for a special permit for a totally, it's an unrelated subject as far as.
All right. Okay.
This goes, but we appreciate your input. You might find out when we talk to the applicant again that they're gonna maybe paint and refurbish the garage, who knows?
Okay.
It sounds like it's an eyesore, so.
Yeah.
I doubt they're gonna build a brand-new house and leave an eyesore, but we'll figure that out later if we.
It's just, it's a very small lot.
Yep.
So, anyway, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Okay, I'm gonna move to close public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now. Let's see. Can I ask? I would ask you, we're gonna go to board discussion now, but I'm gonna ask you, do you have plans to paint the garage? And who knows?
The eventual plan is to rehab the garage. It's just, right now, it's a monetary issue right now. But, yeah, the homeowner plans on living here and making improvements and be a good neighbor.
Okay. Other, other than that, I mean, that's not even an issue. This is pretty routine. And, Mark, would you like to make findings?
Mr. Chair, could you close the public hearing?
Oh, he did close the public hearing.
Nope. Close public comment.
Oh, there's public comment and public hearing. Gotta get used to this. All right, I'm gonna move to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, would you like to make findings, Mark? I can't, it's all like that. Oh.
I can do it.
Oh, okay.
Can I do it?
Sure.
My findings on appeal number 2024-016. James, they want to demolish an existing single-family dwelling, raise the foundation elevation, and construct a new single-family dwelling. The application falls within, I find that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance in the ordinance for grant of a special permit. Section 240-91H3 allows for the complete demolition and rebuilding of residents on a nonconforming lot. I find a site plan review is not required for single-family residential dwellings. I find that after an evaluation of the evidence that was presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, it would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I find the proposed yard setbacks, one of the tests is the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building, or otherwise must comply with the required setbacks. The existing dwelling has a front-back, front setback of 50.3 feet south, 30 feet east, rear setbacks of 0.1 feet north, and 3.6 feet, and rear setback west of 6.8 feet. The existing lot coverage is 18.6%, or 1835 square feet. The existing gross floor area is 14, 14 square feet. The proposed dwelling has a setback of 42.5 feet south. Hang on a minute. Yeah.
45.2.
45.2 feet south, 30.4 feet east, rear setback of minus .1 feet north, and 3.6 feet, and a rear setback west of 6.8 feet. They do not, it's similar to the, to the same setback. I find that it's similar to the same, does not exceed into the setback, into the existing setback. The proposed lot coverage is 19.5%, or 1920 square feet. The proposed gross floor area is 2118 square feet. The required setbacks are 30 feet front, 10 feet side, and rear. The proposed lot coverage shall not exceed 20% or the existing lot cover, whichever is greater. I find that the, the existing lot coverage is 18.6%, and the proposed lot coverage is 19.5%, which is less than the 20%. The floor area ratio shall not exceed .30 or 30%. Existing floor area ratio of the structure being demolished, whichever is greater. The existing FAR is 18.6%, and the proposed FAR is 21.5%, thereby meeting the requirement. The building height in feet shall not exceed 30 feet to the highest plate and shall contain more than two and a half stories. The proposed building height is 22 feet to the top of the plate and two stories, and therefore meets that requirement. The proposed new dwelling would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. Those are my findings.
I will second those findings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you have proposed conditions?
Yep, those are conditional findings. Conditions 1 through 6 is noted on the staff report dated some date. July 10th?
Oh.
It's dated, dated May 9th and revised May 29th.
Okay.
Okay. Can I recommend that you read those into the record just because of the.
Sure.
Difficulties we're having tonight.
Here are my conditions. Special permit number 2024-016 is granted to Jay and Betsy James pursuant to Section 240-91H3, nonconforming lot, to demolish the existing family, single-family dwelling, raise the foundation elevation, and construct a new single-family dwelling. The new dwelling will be detached from the garage, leaving the existing nonconforming garage in place. Subject property is located at 642 South Main Street, Centerville, Mass. Second condition. The site development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with a plan entitled Plan of Land Number 642 South Main Street in Centerville, Barnstable, Massachusetts. Proposed conditions planned, prepared by BSC Group, dated April 17th, 2024, with a last revision date of May 16th, 2024. Third condition. The total lot coverage of all structures in the lots will not exceed 19.5%, and the floor area ratio shall not exceed 21.5%, which are the proposed. Fourth. The proposed redevelopment shall represent full build-out of the lot, further expansion of the dwelling, or construction of additional accessory structures is prohibited without prior approval of the board. Five. All mechanical equipment associated with the dwelling, that's air conditioning, electric generators, et cetera, shall be screened from neighboring homes and the public right away. And finally, six. The decision shall be recorded to the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Land Court, and copies of the recorded decision shall be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals office and the Building Division prior to the issuing of a building permit. The rights authorized by this special term, permit must be exercised within two years unless extended. Those are the conditions. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, just before we do final, does, if they were to rehab the garage, does that, is that covered under this, or is that some, do they have to come back for this?
No, that wouldn't be covered under this.
Wouldn't need to cover anything.
Wouldn't need to, right? Is it just as a right? I'm assuming. I just wanna make sure there's no trigger to bring it back here, that's all.
That would be just a typical standard.
The garage would have to be, would have to come back because it's within setbacks, and sounds like there's a little bit of pushback, but, you know, you do have the grandfathered right to have it at that setback, so. But you would have to, I am correct there, Anna?
If they were to demo, demolish the current garage, is that your, is that your point?
Yeah.
It would have to come back if they are going to expand it.
Yeah, they can rehab it.
But they can, they can reshingle and paint.
Well, because you need a building permit to get even a roof or new windows, so.
Right, but if they're not expanding it.
Right.
Then they're fine.
Yep. Good question.
Those are my conditions.
Okay.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor of accepting?
Aye.
You have your special permit, sir. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appeal number 2024-018. Stephen J. Castan, cat, sorry, Constantino, trustee of the Clifton Constantino Living Trust, has petitioned for a lot variance pursuant to Section 24011RB, RD1, and RF2 residential, residential districts and Section 24125, Zoning Board of Appeals. The proposed subdivision will reestablish the same lot lines as pri, as prior to the 1985 merger, and will be legitimized with an approval not required in our plan. If approved by this board, the subject property is located at 37 Goodway, Goodview Way, rather, Barnstable, Mass. It's shown on Assessor's Map 319 as parcel 080. It's located in the Residence BRB zoning district. Hi.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, just to remind you, my, my name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port. I was here on June 10th, 12th, with this petition that you just read in, as well as the following one, appeal number 202419, seeking variances for both of those lots, which had merged back in 1985. We had quite a long and spirited debate about that, and I know that the board at that point had some questions, wanted a continuance to seek some advice from Town Council about what we could do here. I believe that you now have Attorney Kathleen O'Connell's opinion, and I don't know if that has helped in your analysis, but it sure helped mine. So I guess, you know, the, we've already submitted all the information and the evidence that we, we wanted to submit. I think it was just a matter of the board getting comfortable with granting these variances under these circumstances, and I think you have that opinion that agrees that they can be granted tonight.
Yeah, that letter is not on either one of the petitions on the micro, laser fiche. But I did read it, and it did point, paved the, you know, path for approving this. Did anybody else have a chance to read that correspondence?
It just seemed like a, a, a non-understood error by both sides. It was just essentially happened unknowingly.
I don't know yet. Can we follow the procedure? Because I have some questions.
Yeah, I'd like to have it in front of me. Because it's in. Oh, oh, thank you. We should make you share it. Oh, yours. Oh, very good. Okay, yeah. Is this part of the record at this point, Anna, or just?
It's for the board.
For the board, but I'd like to read it into the record. I don't know what the procedure for that would be. But, and, has everybody had a chance to read this?
I don't think so.
No, that, that's opinion of council to the board.
Yeah.
I wouldn't put it on the record. I think we should address the membership. Assigned members at the last meeting and the fact that Chairman Dewey's not here.
Right, we haven't assigned members, and Jake isn't here.
No, we had.
We had.
Chairman Dewey's not here.
Were you at that meeting? Can, is there, you were already assigned to it. Were you at that meeting?
I don't know if I was here, but I'm, I'm more than happy to pass it over to Manny at this point, if he wants to take Chairman Dewey's spot. I don't know. Or do we?
No, if you would have needed to be.
Oh, he wasn't at the meeting, I'm sorry.
June 12th?
I don't believe I was here. I don't. I don't, no, I wasn't. Yep.
Okay, so we'll only have the four out of the five assigned members, in which case you'd need all four to vote in favor. Let's see. Well, first, do we have any questions for Attorney Tardif?
You know, I have a question. I'd like to.
Both mics off. I don't think your mic's on.
One of the tests is owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography of land or structures, and especially affecting such land and structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. What's the finding there that you're recommending?
I guess my finding, what I had talked about last time was that, first of all, I think you do have a unique shape, at least on the southerly lot. On the northerly lot, I think that the unique circumstance is owing to the structure and not too much to the topography shaped soil. So, because that structure has been there since, I'm trying to remember, I think it was in the 1940s or 50s.
Okay, I understand. Now that I see that, I beg your pardon, it's the, it's lot T, it's the southern lot that is shaped pretty uniquely.
Correct.
I understand. Okay, that was my question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. Pull a comment?
Okay. Public comment was closed at the last hearing, but I can vote to reopen it, but I don't see any.
I thought he left it open.
Oh, I was told it was closed. Okay.
We'll open it again.
Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? Okay. I will now move to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, the comment is closed. Board discussion.
Public hearing.
Well, we can close public hearing too, I guess, but I move to close public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, I was a little confused by this one last time, and it kind of makes sense to me now, and I, how does everybody feel about it, you know? We only have four members that can vote on it right now, so they, I would kind of want to poll everybody, including Mark. What are our thoughts on this?
Just, it was just a thought, in that after reading the brief, number one of the soil shaped topography was one of our bigger questions, and unfortunately, I don't know that it got particularly well resolved with the opinion. Says there is, but it does not say why, and it makes it just challenging a little bit.
Yeah, that's why I asked a question, Mark. I don't, I don't think she answered that either, quite frankly. I mean, the, it is a unique shape, but it does not include deficiencies in the depth with area and especially frontage, so it should justify a grant of variance, is what she says.
In the, in the last paragraph, it states that basically the reasons were because of the, the reasons stated by the applicant's attorney. Perhaps you very briefly could say what your, what your reasoning was on number one, so shape topography?
Shape soil.
Thank you.
Well, again, we're looking at the two lots that are basically one merged. The lower lot is, I think is unique in shape. It's caused by the curve in that road, and if you look at the development on the land court plans submitted, you'll see that that's unique to the neighborhood. Everyone else really has a full lot except for that one. I think that one would definitely pass muster. As for the northerly lot, again, we have a, we have a lot that has a structure on it. The person who bought that structure thought they were buying that lot, didn't know that there was some deficiency in that lot, in the fact that there is a piece dangling on there by legal implication. And so what we would look at is we have a house on a lot, and I think that in this case, this is a rare circumstance where you have, the actual structure is the one that is, is the unique circumstance in this case, is that it is sitting there, they thought they were buying that, the northerly rectangle, and they got a little bit more than they thought they were getting. So I think those are the reasons, and I think it goes more toward the hardship here in this case, and I go, she was very clear of the fact that these two people did not cause that hardship. I don't think anyone ever challenged that, really. I don't think anyone was thinking about that back in 1985. These people weren't around. But the fact that they are now owned by different people, and in fact, one of, Mr. Constantino also owns the property to the west of the triangle lot, makes this even more unique, and I think that's really where you were looking for a path. I think that was the words I heard a couple times, and I think you found one with this opinion.
So are we hearing both appeal 2024-018 and 2024-019?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest we clarify that, that we are hearing both of those cases concurrently.
You should read in the other one to the record, please.
Okay. So also Susan E. Murphy, Richard Sanoski have petitioned for a lot variance, lot area variance pursuant to section 24011RB, RD1, RF2 residential districts and section 240125 zoning Board of Appeals. The proposed subdivision will reestablish the same lot lines as prior to the 1985 merger and will be legitimized with an approval not required Plan if approved by this board. The subject property is located at 57 Goodview Way, Barnstable, Mass. As shown on assessor's map 319 as parcel, as parcel 081. It is located in the Residence BRB District. Okay.
So the, this, on the, I'm looking at the site plan here, at the draft plan, it's lot R and S and lot T. Lot R and S, is that the same lot, or are there two lots where the house is?
They were laid out as two lots back in the day on a land, on land court plans, and then the house was built over both of them back in, I'm trying to remember the year. It's quite a long time. So that has become one lot. I can probably show you, though I think I did file the plans from the land court that do show them as two separate lots, but it's built over the lot line, so for purposes of the town of Barnstable and building and zoning, it's probably one lot.
Okay, so we're, we are here, so our subject of attention is lot T. Right? I mean, we want to unmerge the lots.
Correct.
Okay, so we're unmerging lot T from lot R and S.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so.
The way this is drawn, this is R and S. What's this?
I don't know. I think it's R and S. I don't know. Lot R and S, is that the whole lot where the house is now?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Lot, lot R and S, is that where the, is that the whole lot where the, where the house is now?
That's correct.
Okay.
Those are two lots put together, and that has 140 feet of frontage. These were two lots that were each 70 feet by 100 feet deep.
Okay.
And lot T belongs to the Murphy and Sanoskis?
No, T belongs to Mr. Constantino and his trust, and S and R, or R and S belong to Mr. Murphy and, Ms. Murphy and Mr. Sanoski.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So this has been confusing for the first time already.
I know.
How unique is lot T in the neighborhood? Are most of them just rectangular lots?
They are, most of them are. There's, I can show you these land court plans. I thought I had filed them, but I can show them to you.
You may have, but.
Sure, let me show them to you.
Unless they're on there.
Sure.
So this is sheet one, and this is sheet two. These are all the same plan, just on different sheets. T is here.
Okay, so it's just T. So just T and W are unique?
That's it.
T and W, what I'm looking, T and W.
T and then S and R, this is where the house is.
Right, but I'm looking at, in the neighborhood, there's only three lots, but most of them are, this should be entered into, because one of the tests is, is the unique to the neighborhood.
Which it is. We've done quite a few cases in this area, it's by Millway Beach in Barnstable.
Right.
But they're usually for nonconforming lot sizes. This, this is completely, you know, not even typical.
Can I offer a thought?
Yeah.
So just, just a thought, and maybe this, maybe this doesn't really help this situation, but this is a town bylaw, and in the town's eyes, this is currently connected, these two lots?
No.
Technically, I mean, are they?
No, this is a common law doctrine of merger. Yeah, so.
Okay.
In, in space, in, only in lawyers' minds, we, we look at that disappearing lot line when in fact, it's not, it's still there. I mean, that's what, and that's how everyone thought they were, that's what they thought they were getting.
I understand they were sold separately and unknowingly taken apart, but in whose eyes is this a merged lot currently?
The law.
The law.
The law.
Okay. It's hard because they're separate petitions.
Excuse me?
It's just more difficult because they're separate petitions. If we were looking at it as a whole.
Yeah, it, it's not that they, all three of these people own this whole piece, that's why we had to do it this way, and I, you know, they're assessed separately, they're, you know, the deeds are separate, and so I think that's why we had to do it this way.
Essentially, two different people own this merged lot, which is, in the eyes of the law, one lot, but two different parties own it.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not like Mr. Constantino could go into that gentleman's backyard and sit there, and it's not like they could, you know, put a pool on that lot. It's not ownership in that sense, it's more the law.
So this is kind of in a sense, we could look at this as righting a wrong that we've seen things like that before.
Well, it's a granting of a variance, and so it is three tests, and one of the tests was owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography, and I believe that document supports the fact that it is unique in shape in the neighborhood, which would pass that test, and that was my original question. So my suggestion is, is that should be part of the public record, because that supports at least my vote on a passing number one test.
Is that assessor's map 319 that you have right there?
I submitted actually land court plans.
Oh, that's the land court plan.
Yeah.
Did you see it, Aaron?
I did not see it, no.
Paul, we're trying to establish that the, the shape is unique in the neighborhood, and the assessor's map will show that just as well.
Only one of the lots is unique, only T.
Yeah, I know.
Right. I was just trying to, in the merge them.
Can we, they haven't seen them.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. What's the general intent here? Is it, I'm sorry, real quick. What's going on? I'm sorry, I missed the prior meeting and I didn't have a chance to review it, I guess I should have.
Sure. Mr. Constantino owns the abutting property to lot T.
38.
38 George.
I see it.
He fronts on George.
Yep.
And we had initially contacted me because he was thinking about building something on lot T. When we did the analysis, I, I thought we were going to have a merged lot between the two of them and that he couldn't put a separate house on a lot that he already has a house on, and to our surprise, it was actually merged with the northerly neighbor who was unrelated. And so in order to, and what he wants to do at this point is probably do an ADU, and to do that, we needed to do an A&R plan to put the line back, and then combine lot T with Mr. Constantino's George Street lot, and then apply for the ADU.
Gotcha.
And then the people to the north, they just want what they always thought they had.
Which was their, which is R and S.
That's it, and they don't want to do anything.
And so, again, I'm slightly confused about ownership of lot T. We feel there's, Mr. Constantino and owner's R and S own lot T together jointly?
Well, the two lots merged by operation of law in 1985.
Yep.
And they increased the lot size. At that point, they had, the lot size for this zone was increased, and these two lots were owned by the same people, and thus the law, the common law, just eliminates the lot line in their eyes and says you have, you're pushing nonconforming lots together to make them more conform, more conforming or completely conforming. And so that doctrine still sits around, and that's why we had this problem, and so we're just trying to uncouple.
Is there, is there going to be a financial resolution at some point? I mean, does Mr. Constantino have to pay lot owner R and S? No.
No, sir.
It's just simply undo what was?
They're just getting what they thought they were getting.
Yep.
You know, when they bought them.
And clearly, the owners of R and S are in support at this point. They're not here to say they're not, right? They've been notified, they've been in touch with them.
Yeah, so.
It's really just a matter of fitting it into the three conditions.
Yeah, and I think clearly looking at the map here from, on laser fish and this, lot T is, is weirdly shaped. I think it would pass the three-pronged test in that regard, and then we have that defined from the opinion of the assistant town attorney, spelled out the other two. Thank you so much.
Okay, do we have the conditions written down in a form that they could be entered into the record? Because whoever makes finding is going to, is going to want to.
It's a plan of land, a plan of land in Barnstable, October 11th, 1944. That's it. That's really.
Okay, so you're adding that to your.
You could, you could just add the, the land court plan number at the top of the first page. It should be up there, printed on there? Yeah, okay. And Mr. Chairman, one other thing on the, in the staff reports, there was two, there is a suggested condition that the site development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan entitled Draft Plan. I believe it's this plan. There really is no plan to do any type of site development at this point. All we're trying to do is just couple them back to where they belong, that's it.
So we can strike that language?
Uncouple, then couple back, yeah.
This is like working backwards, like reverse engineering. Who would like to make findings? I think Paul wants to do it again.
I just didn't answer.
Jeez.
Do it, true, I don't care. You want me to?
Sure. You seem to have a good handle on the.
57, okay, I'm looking for 37 here. Hang on.
Anna, can we do the findings together, or should we do them separately for each case? I think.
You should probably do them separately.
We could reference the findings.
18, okay. Concerns, appeal number 2024-018, Constantino. The proposed substance, the proposal is to reestablish the same lot lands, lot lines as prior to the 1985 merger. as prior to the 1985 merger. Hang on here, see, okay. These are my findings. Owing to circumstances related to soil conditions. This is a variance, I'm sorry. A petition for lot area variance. The address is 57 Goodview Way, Barnstable, Mass. I find that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. It's clear that Lot T, which is the one we're talking about, thirty-seven, correct?
Yep, correct.
Is an unusual shape, and so it passes that, in the neighborhood, it's an unusual shape and pass, thus passes the test. Second test is a little enforced, literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The hardship is, is Lot T is stranded at the present time, and it needs to be, and therefore, the hardship is it cannot be used. The third test is, therefore, it satisfies the test of substantial hardship. The third test is desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intended purpose of the zoning ordinance. I think it complies strictly with a, almost strictly with the zoning ordinance, and, and so therefore, it passes that test. Those are my findings.
Go here, second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I have, okay, those findings are with three conditions, and have you looked at the, reviewed the conditions? They're acceptable?
They are.
Okay, so I submit that the three conditions as defined in staff report dated...
Let me see.
May twenty-third.
May, May twenty-third.
Mr. Chair, did you want the second condition removed?
Well, I think that is on 2024-19. It says constructed in substantial conformance with the plan. Correct.
Did I read the wrong law?
No, no, no. You're, you're on 2024-18, and that just says that site development shall be, well, it still says constructed.
Oh.
We just have to reword that. Or just take it out, maybe, Anna?
I'll take out the word constructed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, shall be in substantial conformance.
In substantial conformance with the plan, that, item number two.
Yep, that's fine.
Condition number two.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Those are my conditions?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then how do you want to handle nineteen? Do you want to just read it in, and then just say that it was, use the same findings and conditions? It doesn't seem necessary to read, to read them again, and, or should we?
You should read the findings.
Yep.
Okay.
This is Appeal Number 2024-019, Murphy and Sanoski. Susan E. Murphy and Richard Sanoski. Petition for a variance to legitimize the property line between 57 Goodview Way and 37 Goodview Way. My findings are, and this variance has to do with 57 Goodway, Goodview Way, Barnstable, Massachusetts. I find that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. And I find that, well, all we're doing is reestablishing the same lot lines that were there prior to the 1985 merger. And so it restores, it restores the appropriate size of the lot.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute. Little enforcement of provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial, or other to petitioners. Well, yeah, I mean, they couldn't use, they can't build or reconstruct, excuse me, they can't build or addition on Lot R and S unless we solve this property lot. Test number three is desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intended purpose of the zoning ordinance. I think this is, this makes this in compliance, more in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Those are my findings.
Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have three conditions with this, conditions one, two, three. And I guess we want, the, the site development shall be, we're going to strike the words constructed, shall be in substantial performance, conformance with the plan titled Draft Plan, Plan of Land of Barnstable, Massachusetts by J.M. O'Reilly and Associates, dated April 17th, 2024. Those are the three. Counselor, is that all right? Okay.
Thank you.
Those are my conditions?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I think we did it.
Appreciate it. Thanks for being flexible with that. I appreciate that.
Flexible, okay.
We've been called ours.
Okay, new business. We have Appeal 2024-026.
Fish is down again.
Oh, really?
It's all right.
It's not you, Attorney Constable.
Okay. Well, we can get started anyway. Appeal Number 2024-026, Donald McKinnon, trustee of MCCM Realty Trust, has petitioned for a modification of variance number 2023-012. The applicant received approval for variance number 2023-012 to construct a detached accessory structure. The petitioner proposes to decrease the size of the structure, and seeks to amend variance number 2023-012 to reference revised plans. The subject property is located at 910 Main Street, Catuit, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 035 as parcel 090. It is located in Residence F, RF Zoning District, and the Resource Protection Overlay District, RPOD.
Thank you. Good evening.
Assigning members. About Larry, and the regular members, and Manny.
Six.
That's six.
Oh, are you a regular member now?
I'm a regular member, but I'll sit out, I can sit this one out again. I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
The rule says the regular members...
We'll do...
Rule says what?
The regular members have to go.
Oh, sorry. I can't sit out.
Okay, so everybody except Larry. How's that, Larry? I don't blame you.
Sorry, Larry. I tried.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, I'm Eliza Cox with Nuttner McLennan and Fish on behalf of the applicant. Mr. McKinnon, who is the trustee of the trust that owns the property, and you've got your plan back up, which is great, thank you, is seated here to my left. As indicated in the hearing notice, we are here this evening seeking to amend a prior variance decision that this board had granted, to swap out the plans that were referenced in that prior decision with a very slightly revised plan. Frankly, we debated whether or not we even needed to be here tonight, because the language says substantial conformance, and I think this is still in substantial conformance, but out of an abundance of caution, decided, and since there's no sort of minor modification process at the zoning board, we filed the application, and we're here this evening with this very minor change. So I'm going to be very brief, although it looks like Mr. Alves might want to say something to me.
Just good, safer to cut through this. So you, you got approval for a bigger structure. You're going to build something smaller, and you just want to amend this to have the documents reflect that the plans you're going to use will be for the smaller.
That is exactly right. Everything else is the same, same location. The garage component is being eliminated.
Let's go, can we go now?
Okay.
If you want me to stop right now, I, I'm happy to do that. I will say Mr. McKinnon does have a sort of a point of interest that the board may be curious to hear this information. So this property has been the subject of several prior decisions. The original decision dated several years ago actually changed lot lines between this property and 33 Oyster Place to allow for construction of updated septic systems, and they were nitrogen removal septic systems, and in order to site those systems outside of wetland buffers and deal with the topography between the two properties, that was sort of the first variance. And Mr. McKinnon just got some results from this innovative septic system, which he just wanted to share with you as a point of interest, because it's pretty exciting, the nitrogen removal. And then I'll stop talking unless you have any questions of me.
Great.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So...
Is that microphone on in front of you, Ern?
Excuse me. Yep, okay, yeah.
Pull it right towards you.
Okay. Is this any better?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm Donald McKinnon, trustee of the trust. So, you know, we appreciate you had granted the variance to do this lot line adjustment. It allowed for two nitro systems, one at 33 Oyster Place, C L on at 910 Main Street. Both homes are close proximity to Catuit Harbor, and at the time, we wanted to put in the nitro septic systems to help minimize the nitrogen loading in the harbor. So they were installed, they've been performing well, and I have the results of the latest tests. They're, they're tested regularly. They're also tied into the Wi-Fi system of the home, and essentially, as the effluent comes out of the house, they measure the nitrogen load before it goes into the nitro tank, and then they measure the nitrogen load as it exits the nitro tank, so they can get a precise measurement on the actual reduction. And this report will show that it's been reduced in the most recent one by ninety-six percent. So it's taking out virtually almost all the nitrogen. So, you know, I know a lot of times you take actions and you wonder what the results are. Well, the results are very positive and...
Thank you.
Does Zeke, does Zeke know that? Zeke Crocker?
Yes.
Good, good.
He's given these results, and he was very happy to see us as well.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And Ben, I think these are the first two in this immediate section of Catuit Harbor.
Thank you.
You strongly encourage our neighbors to do the same thing.
Thank you, and congratulations.
But it was really, it all started with the adjustment of the property lines.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
It is.
Thank you for...
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment on one of the conditions in the staff report, whenever you'd like me to get there. Mark is telling me to be quiet, but I do, would like to make one suggested edit to one of the conditions.
Okay.
And I can tell you what that is now, or whenever.
I just have a quick question. Can you, so, again, we granted a variance for a particular project, and, and you mentioned something about the garage, and then it got...
Right, yeah. So you grant, you've granted several variances on the property initially to divide them and do a land swap between the two properties.
I remember all that, yep.
In one of the decisions, you had your standard condition, no accessory structures without board approval. We came back last year with a request to allow an accessory structure on 910 Main Street, and you approved it. What we're here tonight to do is slightly decrease the size of the accessory structure that you've already approved on this property.
Gotcha.
There's no new variances required by this. It's just really reducing the size of an approved accessory structure on the property.
And the garage piece was, was...
So, at last, a year ago, when we were here, the accessory structure consisted of a workshop with a garage space, and as Mr. McKinnon advanced the plans, realized he really didn't need the garage space, and so that's been eliminated. The workshop space, accessory workshop space remains.
Gotcha.
And that resulted in the structure decreasing in size, too.
Perfect.
And do you have a reference, plan number and date for the revised plan?
Yes, it's in your staff report. That's, that's the correct reference. So it's May 21st, 2024. That's condition three in the staff report.
The revision date.
The revision date, correct, yeah.
And was the edit you were suggesting?
The edit is condition, draft condition two in the staff report, so it says both septic systems shall be maintained in perpetuity. I think that's a carryover from when the application involved 33 Oyster Place and 910 Main Street. There's only one septic system on 910 Main Street, and that's the only property that's part of this application. So what I was going to ask the board is not to use that language, but instead to include a condition, and I did email this to Anna today, just so she has it in ahead of time, that would say, "The septic system on the property shall be maintained in perpetuity until such time as the property is connected to a municipal sewer system." And that way, this is within, ways out, but within the comprehensive wastewater management plan, this area. That way, when and if this property ever connects to sewer, we don't have to come back to the board again to modify that condition, because as a matter of law, they'd have to be required to connect.
That is true. Okay. But back to the plan, it's just dated May 21st, 2024. Was there plan one?
Sorry, that's the revision date. So if you look at condition, draft condition three of your staff report, it's, the plan is dated April 29th, 2021, with the last revision date of May 21st, 2024. That, that is correct, that reference in your staff.
Okay, so it's site plan of 910 Main Street and 33?
Yep.
Okay.
Just for clarification, when a variance is granted, is there a timeframe established for when the project needs to be moved forward?
So a variance has to be exercised within a year. So that, that would be the timeframe. Exercising doesn't mean you actually have to start construction. That's different than the special permit standard.
Okay.
Essentially, it's, and I have, I did discuss this with the building commissioner, because it's been about a year since we were last before you. The prior decision was recorded, and monies were expended to advance the plans towards construction, which he determined in our conversation, he felt was exercising. But even if that isn't the case, it still hasn't been a year since the appeal period expired on the last time we were before the board, so we couldn't even start this plan until, I think it was like August of, the appeal period expired on the variance we're seeking to modify in, sorry, July 20th of 2023. So it's still less than a year
Gotcha.
From that prior one. So this will extend it again a year from the date of this decision, because we had to go through a public hearing and the like, but that is the timeframe.
I thought the appeal period was twenty-eight days.
That's the appeal period, but then you have, an applicant has one year to exercise their variance.
Okay, this is for the applicant.
And we're still in that timeframe, yeah.
Okay. This is, I'm glad you gave us the information on the nitrogen system, because other than that, this would be a pretty boring thing, so, yes. Larry, would you like to make findings?
Do we have public comment?
Oh, we didn't even open public comment. Do you want to say something? I don't blame you. Okay, so I'm going to move to closed public comment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
I move to closed public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Larry's not even on the hearing, so he probably shouldn't make findings.
True, I left you out. Wow.
Margaritaville.
Just, you must want to go home or something. Okay, Mark wants to make findings. Oh, you don't have the, I have this.
I don't even see the findings.
Thanks, Benny.
That's it?
All right, I'll take here, I'll, chairman, I'll take over, sure, why not? All right, this is in regards to Appeal Number 2024-026, Donald J. McKinnon, trustee of M, I'm sorry, MCCM Realty Trust, has petitioned for a modification of variance number 2023-012. The applicant received approval for variance number 2023-012 to construct a detached accessory structure. The petitioner proposes to decrease the size of the structure and seeks to amend variance 2023-012 to reference revised plans. The subject property is located at 910 Main Street, Catuit, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 035 as parcel 090. It is located in the Residence F, RF, zoning district, and the Resource Protection Overlay District, RPOD.
and the Resource Protection Overlay District, R. P. O. D. Do, 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 do. And.
There's only, so it's a modification.
Yep, so.
Of a variance, so there's only one finding because the three-pronged test has already been established.
Gotcha. So that's, that's it. Yep, that's my finding. Yeah. Okay, my finding is very, I don't even, I mean, I just read it. It's, okay, anyway, variance number twenty-two-four dash oh-two-six is seeking to modify variance number twenty-two-three dash oh-one-two to construct a detached accessory structure. The petitioner poses to decrease the size of the structure and seeks to amend variance number twenty-two-three dash oh-one-two to reference revised plans. All other conditions are in effect. Those are my findings.
And as we said, the revised, revised plan is dated May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Yep, and we'll get to that when we get to the conditions, yep.
Okay.
Second, the findings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I do have six conditions listed. We discussed them already. Number three, number two is going to be slightly changed, modified to reflect in perpetu, in perpetuity until the sewer system is in line. And then number three does show the plan date and so forth. Site plan number nine-ten Main Street and number thirty-three Oyster Place, Catuit Road, Mass. So those are my findings. Those are my conditions. Any questions regarding those?
One slight revision on the conditions instead of both. They should just say the septic tank because we're only referring to the one.
I can't, I'm sorry. I can't hear what he's saying.
I thought you said that.
Oh, sorry. If you did, I missed it. Apologize.
Yeah, I can't hear, I didn't, I didn't hear what he said.
Second.
Sorry, second. Ah, yep.
Favor?
Okay.
Aye.
I couldn't hear what he said. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he was asking.
You're just going to add the condition and after, yes.
About condition two, about the, or is it three?
We had the language on two. We're good.
About saying the septic.
Yeah, only one, at nine-ten. Yep, sorry, Manny. I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very strange.
Okay. Really?
Okay.
Okay. We have no correspondence. Are there any matters not anticipated by the chair? I'm the chair, so I didn't reasonably anticipate anything. Upcoming hearings, we have July twenty-fourth, August fourteenth, and August twenty-eighth. And we haven't continued anything, so we don't have to worry about those hearing dates.
Fourteenth is in person? So, okay.
Okay. Good to know.
Gotcha.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can't second it if somebody hasn't moved it first.
Come on, guys.
See ya.